All meeting order at 6:00 PM. I'm going to read this from the governor's office. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A 18, and the governor's March 15 and July 2, 2020 orders imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Adams zoning board is being conducted by remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided by the order. We have posted today's agenda in accordance with the open meeting law, which included the call-in information for the meeting. Despite our best efforts, if we are not able to provide for real-time access for the public to participate in today's meeting, a recording of this meeting can be made available by request, as this meeting is being recorded using the Zoom platform. We're going to move on and read the first application.
Announce board members.
Oh, I'm sorry. The board members here tonight are Aaron Gerzetti.
Raymond Garten.
Nat Arms.
Wayne Piagie.
Glenn Deal.
The first applicant is an application of the Adams Center for the Arts LLC for property located at 13 to 15 Commercial Street, requesting a variance under mass 125 old dash 11. Intensity of use schedule of the Adams zoning bylaw to separate from common ownership, two buildings, the first Baptist Church and the parsonage, predating the town's zoning bylaws in a B2 zoning district. Anybody we have representing?
Hi, I'm Brian Casella from BEK Associates. I'll be here representing the Adams Center for the Arts LLC and Donald Summer.
What's your last name again? I'm sorry.
Casella, K-O, C is in cat, Z is in zebra, E-L-A.
I'm sorry, continue please.
Sure. I don't know if you want just a little breakdown. We have two buildings on the same lot, the Baptist Church and the parsonage. As you said, they predate zoning. Subdivision control law allows it to separate it, but it will not meet zoning, so coming to the ZBA to, you know, get relief from the zoning. We've maintained the flyer code five feet from every wall down the property line, and we'd like to separate it as shown on the plan that we've provided to you.
Do the board members have any questions?
Just one very broad one. What specific variances are you requesting?
I think it was on the, unfortunately, oh, here it is. Section 125 dash 11, intensity use schedule. We don't need the actual, the actual area of frontage with the parsonage.
So, well, let me run through what I think you're asking for and just make sure that I'm correct. The parsonage lot will be less than the required 10,000 square feet in a B2 zoning district. The parsonage lot will not meet the 80-foot minimum lot width requirement. The lot frontage will not meet the 65-foot minimum lot frontage, and both the parsonage and the church will not meet the 15-foot side lot line between the required side lot setback from the line. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, so those are the specific variances you were requesting, not just a general one from 1511. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, I have a question over how is the required parking going to be meant for the parsonage?
He has, if need be, the parking, there's no parking now anyways. The, if it needs be, Mr. Summer owns the property to the south and to the west of the property, and he will make sufficient parking for that when they go to get whatever permits they need to do the, whatever they intend to use the property for. Right now, we're just seeking to separate the two parcels, and we'd seek relief from the intensity use schedule.
Well, you know, as you, I'm sure, realize, variances are not granted just open-handed without consideration. You know, it's a high standard to meet. And, you know, personally, I mean, I think this is a great project. I'm not trying to throw an obstacle in the way. I'm just viewing the physical layout and trying to sort through the zoning bylaw. I personally, I think, well, I don't think a vague assurance that Mr. Summer will provide the parking required somehow in the future maybe is an adequate assurance. That's just, you know, that's why I brought it up. And then the other thing I do have question value is, so these buildings, the closest spot is only 10.2 feet separating the two buildings. Under common ownership, obviously, they can get in there and maintain both buildings even with that fairly minimum distance. What provisions are being made in order to allow both property owners in the future to continue to have access to maintain the buildings? And that's part of the purpose of the 15-foot side yard requirement.
Well, number one, the subdivision control law allows for this division. We allow five, we allow five feet.
Not without a variance, sir.
I'm, I hate to correct you, but yes, it does.
The bar's minimum, you meet the minimum street frontage without a variance unless you get a variance, and you are having to request a variance from this board.
Well, I don't want to get in an argument with you, but we've done this numerous times. This happens all the time in mill towns like Adams, North Adams, Clarkspur. It's a very common occurrence. You cannot possibly meet the sideline setback. I know for a fact, I did own a property in Adams. I had one foot off my property line, no different than the parsonage is with the Australian LLC. It's the same scenario. The Town of Adams has a bylaw whereby you can post a bond, and you have, I believe it's 30 days a year to access your neighbor's property to maintain your own property. So if that does become an issue, Adams already has it covered. But the same situation happens.
Adams, I mean, can't grant a property right from a one private property to another. They may be able to do it off of town property, but they can't do it off of, they can't require that some other property owner allow somebody to have access. Those are private property rights. The town doesn't have a whole lot to do with it, frankly.
It's a public safety issue. I've done it my fat, I've owned a piece of property on East Housick Street. I've done it. I posted a bond with the police department, and my neighbor was upset. He didn't, you know, we weren't the best of friends. I posted the bond, and I was able to side my house. It happens all the time. There is a, that is a function that is used in the Town of Adams.
That would request we keep the public hearing open till our next meeting and have time to consult with town officials on this. I'm not prepared to act on, there are too many open questions in my mind.
Well, I would request that we, I understand your concern, but it really is a non-issue because if you look at the other side of the parsonage, the situation has been incurred there since, I forgot what the date, 1881. It's been going on for over 100 years, and people have been able to maintain their homes. It is, I mean, it doesn't mean that in the future, if that's an issue, the owners want to write an easement, but I don't think you can maintain, you can mandate that they have an easement to maintain their homes. I think that's already covered.
In variance, we can do a lot of things. I think it would be in your best interest to go along with a postponement until we have further time to research.
Well, we've already waited an extra month for this meeting. We, we want, we submitted, you know, a couple of months ago when we were, you know, the meeting, the board wasn't, didn't meet, so that's fine, but I would ask that, you know, is that the consensus of the rest of the board members? I mean, this goes on, I have been to numerous meetings in Adams with the same situation, and we've never had an issue before. This is something that happens all the time.
Everybody else have anything to add? Ed?
I'm sorry?
What do you think? What are you thinking?
I was, I realize the problem with the, with the board on the sideline, but I see it also as not a significant issue. There's enough room in there, even if they put a hard fence down through there, you still have five feet from the fence to the buildings on either side, and you can do anything you want in that five feet, except maybe don't, not going to drive a truck through there.
No.
But, you know, you could put scaffolding in there, you could do all kinds of things. You could fight a fire through there. I know, yeah, I agree that it's not the best situation, but in my view, I understand what the purpose is, and I think that's pretty much the best that the property owner can do to separate the two pieces of property.
Do either one of you have anything to add?
I guess my only question is, is why? Why? Yeah, why? Why does this need to be done? I don't understand.
Done tonight or at all?
No, no. Why this parcel?
Ask the representative. Why? We're being, I'm being asked, he's got a question through the chair. Why even divide them? Why is it a problem? Is it just you don't want the building, so you're trying to sell it off differently? Or?
Well, I'm not privy to the financial aspects of it and why exactly they want to do it, but the parsonage building is not needed, it does not follow in with the game plan for what they plan to use with the Baptist Church. I'm sure you can understand that a church is a very hard building to repurpose. The idea is if they can convey off the parsonage and either generate cash for that or own it in a different entity, it may stay in the same one, it may not. But the idea is they get it out of the project for the church, for the church project, and get that under a separate ownership, and so it's not a burden on the church. They may decide they need to sell this parsonage to make the project for the church go on. So the idea is, it's a, it's a burden to have two, two properties, two buildings on one parcel that are totally different in use. So that, that was a game plan, is to separate the two. The parsonage is not needed for the plans for the, for the former church.
Does that answer your question, Chris?
Yeah. Yeah, that was, that was in the proposal.
Thanks. Do you have any more questions?
I don't have any questions for the, once we have motion on it. Once we have motion on, we'll have some comments made. I don't have any more questions.
Sure. Did the board members read the questions and answers in the, in the paperwork?
Yeah.
You did. Now, are you, have anything to say about that?
No.
No? All right.
I understood. I had talked to Mr. Summer some months, a number of months ago, a year ago, about his intention to create a music school, so I kind of understand where he's coming from. That was before this church, he was in the other church at that time.
If there's nothing else, I'd like to open this up to the public comment. Is there anybody, anything for open for public comment?
Not at this time.
Not at this time? Okay. Well, in that case, make a motion?
I'd like to move that we approve the application for Adams Center for Art LLC for property located at 13 to 15 Commercial Street, requesting a variance under paragraph 125 dash 11, intensity of use schedule of the Adams zoning bylaw to separate from common ownership, two buildings, the first Baptist Church and the parsonage, which predate the town's zoning bylaws in a B2 zoning district. Approve that.
Thank you. My motion to approve that. Any second? Anybody? Hmm? Does anybody want to second what he said?
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
All right. We have a second discussion.
Okay. Hey, let's keep in mind that despite what, what Mr. Casella is saying, because the lot frontage is so deficient in setbacks or an area or deficient, the lot frontage alone means that the planning board cannot grant this without, they cannot approve the approval not required subdivision of the property without this board granting the lot with the variance, the lot frontage variance. It's legally impossible for them to do so. The, so there, this is, and I totally understand the reason for doing this. I totally support it, actually, despite how I may sound. However, I think they should come back to us with a parking agreement to serve the parsonage from, as Mr. Casella has said, Mr. Summer owns the adjoining property, he can grant a parking easement or work out an arrangement that is presented to the board that shows that there's, you know, four parking spaces available and will be into the future, something like that. I think there should be a maintenance easement 10 feet wide centered on either side of the property line.
Hmm.
You know, that church building is fairly tall. I would suspect if you were coming in to do maintenance on that side wall, you would probably come in with some sort of lift rather than putting up a bunch of scaffolding. And it's to protect both property owners into the future. You know, I mean, all you need, and I don't know what, you know, that's why I asked for more time, was to find out. I'm not going to trust anybody coming in and saying, this is the way you've always done it. It's always, you know, without somebody in authority that knows.
Sure.
I'm not necessarily, you know, and you may be absolutely right, I just don't know. And I don't, you know, I don't have it in front of me, I don't know the town bylaws and permitting processes for everything that goes on by any means. But I do feel like, I don't know, but I don't think a 10-foot maintenance easement down there that is jointly held by the two property owners, whoever they may be, 50 years from now, is that much to ask in order, I mean, that's, you know, that's going to be a difficult building to work on. And it will be, it will be 30 years from now, and it needs maintenance after it's restored and, you know.
For both buildings, truly.
Truly, but the church is, you know, is far greater in scale. And, you know, I think these are things that can be worked out, but I don't think we have the appropriate kinds of documentation in front of us at this moment. If the variance is granted, it can be granted with specific requirements. It's not a blanket, you know, get out of free, get out of jail free cover. So that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from on this.
I understand. How do we feel about that?
I think that's a good way to proceed, and it would be up to Mr. Casella, I guess, to get those, that, you know, the parking arrangement and, you know, the easement. I'm not sure how that's done in the deeds, but I guess.
Well, right now, it's single ownership, so that, that can be written with no problem at all. The problem is that X number of years from now, somebody buys a parsonage, that, I don't know how you write the document that says that the easement has to go, has to be approved by the parsonage, the future owner of the parsonage.
That's, that's reported as part of the deeds for the property, or the two projects.
Somebody else might want to say buy it with that easement in place.
One other point, there is no parking for the parsonage now, so to require them, require to establish a parking plan for something that doesn't exist at all, I think is beyond what we should request.
There is parking for the whole lot before it's subdivided, so once that, once that's subdivided, then parking has to be arranged for that small parcel. Is that not correct?
There is.
There's always parking.
There's no designated, it starts, I understand, there's no designated parking for that, for the parsonage.
And I think that's what you're trying to get at, is you want, you want something that's.
There is a driveway on the outside of the church that apparently is, is used, at least the church on here. I would presume that some point that was used by the parsonages, their parking, or who knows? You know, we're just supposing here on that point. But there is, there is a limited amount of parking, certainly not enough to serve the church when it was operating as a church, or to serve the arts center. It operates as an arts center, that's, I mean, that's almost another thing, although I imagine, I mean, there is a parking area that is part of BART, but it is used by BART, but it is on this property as it currently exists.
Yeah.
So, because the property line includes part of the BART parking.
Yeah.
So, they, you know, and I don't know what the legal things are for BART to use that versus the church using it.
Probably a parking easement.
It's, you know, that's what it says, easement area, so I'm presuming that's a parking easement for BART in order for them to meet their parking requirements. I would think that the arts center, but we don't know this, and BART's hours of sort of primary use would be somewhat different, but we don't know that. It's surprising, really, but, you know, I, I mean, if, once the parsonage is sold off, there effectively is no legal parking, if the parsonage were to be sold off, there effectively is no legal parking available to the parsonage. None.
Correct. The way it stands.
Yeah, well, that's what it is right now.
No, because it is part of the large ours.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Over on the north side.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
So you, and you want to continue with this till next month to?
Well, it's not the public hearing, I just think, I think Mr. Casella should have a pretty good idea of the two things that I'm requesting be added, provided to us for the next meeting, or they will be, I would say they would be conditions of granting the variance.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Sure. So, as far as the parking goes, you can always do a curb cut, and it's probably enough for two spots in front of the parsonage, you know, if you need be, you know. What you're asking for is not a major issue, that's not a sticking point. The easement area, that's a simple fix. The parking, that's a simple fix. However, in order to get the project moving, can, are you able to grant a variance on conditions that these two items are met, you know, prior to presenting to the planning board? In other words, can we approve the variance, conditionally approve it? I'm not, I'm not sure of the legal aspects of your, your board, but can we get an approval under these two stipulations, and then we will submit a plan within five days or submit a, you know, that'd be on the plan that we would submit to the planning board? Because we'd like to get the project moving, you know, time's running out, it's just another month, and then after we're done with, with the ZBA, there's a 30-day waiting period, and then we have to wait until the planning board meets again. So we're looking at possibly two months, you know, out. If we could do something that'll assist to move the project along, it'd be appreciated.
With condition of order, right? Yeah, we could. We could do that.
Yeah, I'm just looking at under zoning, not in the bylaw, I'm looking in the bylaw what we, what our powers are in regards to variances.
Is Don, if, if we're going to do something like this, is, I don't see Don, I see you. Is he good with that? Again, is that something he's willing to do if we do that?
He personally told me that if the parking is an issue, I will make parking available for the property. He told me that, you know, last week. So that's, that is a non-issue to him. He's okay with that.
All right. None of us are against this, we just need to do it right, and we're slow right now because we want to make sure that everything is done correctly, that's all. We're not against you, we're just trying to figure out the right way to do it and word it.
Okay, but if we can, the thing is, to get the project moving, whatever you can do would be most appreciated.
Sure. Are you happy with it?
I, I think, I think we could, if Glenn would amend this motion, and second or also approve it, I would say we should grant the variance conditioned upon adequate provision of parking for the parsonage, however that's done.
And maintenance easement between.
I mean, you know, there, I, you know, I'm sensitive to get maybe as simple as another haircut, or maybe as simple as the halflinger house.
It's all like that.
An easement and a couple of parking space, I mean, you know, the guns aren't And an easement and a couple of parking space, I mean, you know, they got a backyard back there, if they had used the driveway, they, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's an idea too.
I also, I mean, the parsonage is a fairly large building, I don't think we should necessarily think it's going to stay a single family. Structure in the future, you know, that's, so I don't want to say it's going to be two parking spaces or say, because I don't know. You know, that, and then the, the ten foot maintenance issue centered on the new property line. And I, Glenn, I would say. Based on the plan presented to us dated February fifth, twenty twenty-one. Just as part of this, and again, this, this creates certainty. Somebody knows what the heck it is we were looking at, that is what the plan was that we saw.
So do you want to review the motion? I'll redo that, I'm. I'll ask.
If, if you could amend your motion to. Include can uh, approval to grant the variances, and actually, we should be specific about what variance to grant, to be honest. It's not as simple as just to section fifteen eleven. To the allow a variance to. A, create a lot of point one one three acres, which is. Far in deficit of the minimum ten thousand square foot lot requirement. To allow the lot width to be a minimum of thirty-nine point four three feet, or. Sorry, twenty-nine point six feet in the rear and thirty-nine point four three in the front. Rather than the required eighty foot minimum lot width. Thirty-nine point four three feet of minimum lot frontage. Rather than the required minimum of sixty-five feet. And side property lines. For the parsonage of down to five point one feet. And for the church to five feet, if you notice in the back, it's, you know, a hair less. Subject to provision of adequate mark parking for the parsonage, meeting the standards of the Adam zoning bylaws. Or they can come back to us for a variance, that's, you know, that's specific to the parsonage. And a provision of a ten foot. Maintenance easement granted to both property owners running with the property. Uh centered on the proposed property line. So, long and complicated, sorry, Pam.
I don't want Pam reading that back.
If that's acceptable, Glenn.
That's accept, acceptable to me. I guess one, the other thing I would add is. Is define the drawing that we were talking about.
Oh, and it is the division plan of land in Adams Massachusetts prepared for Adam Center for Art LLC dated February five, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, right. I'm good with that. And the second is still good?
I can second it.
That's wrong.
Sorry.
Um, okay.
Self second.
Yes, I am good with that.
Alright, can we do a roll call vote? I. Say, just got to say your name, good for the public record. One deal, I say yes.
Aaron John Day, yes.
Remy Garden, yes.
Nat Barnes, yes.
Wayne Piagio, yes, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
The town will prepare within fourteen days, the decision noticed to the town clerk's office. And following this, there will be a twenty day appeal. Period before the applicant may obtain the final decision notice. Pam Gary, Pam Gary will send you notification of this in the days ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, we'll see you, Pam.
Next agenda is approval of the minute.
I would, I would rule for a long.
Go ahead, Glenn.
I do have a few corrections, minor correction.
Okay.
Okay, on, um, I don't know if I can find the. Page two, the halfway down the paragraph that starts returning, I'm reading. Down the third line from the bottom, I think that should be detail convenience store rather than convenience. I guess it is convenient to the folks in our neighborhood.
Is that a convenient store up on the corner of, oh yeah, East Hues.
On page three, the second paragraph, um, this one's the only one really meaningful one, I think. Third, or third line, that the landscaping appeared sparse between the budding houses and the store and parking. It was really the area, the houses back behind. That were not screened very well in their landscaping plan. The, what was up, you know, the parking lot across, across the street was really well screened and the houses behind it weren't, so. That was, so that's just kind of, you know, I mean, that's. A little bit more substantive than convenience, spread than convenient. And then um, on page six, two liters. The third paragraph down memory card stated that his concern didn't lie, it lies with the noise levels. I was hoping I didn't lie.
Funny when I read that, I didn't even see that, I read it yet.
So, I would, I would move those, with those changes, that the minutes be approved.
Second?
I'm second.
May you vote?
Glenn said yes.
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 Nat Barnes, yes.
Wayne Piagio, yes. New business, anything for new business, Pam?
Not good over here.
Alright, old business, anything?
Um, oh, I do have something. Pam, uh, do we, what procedures do we have for, um. How far in advance applicants provide the complete information? It's talking to Eric, it's kind of like, what we got tonight didn't necessarily come in till like, middle of last week or something.
No, actually BEK submitted their uh, application. Um, and paper or, or their map. Right, I think sometime in maybe February or March, but because um, I was on vacation. Um, wasn't able to conduct a second Tuesday of the month meeting. We asked Mr. Summers if we could possibly move him up into the end of April. And he agreed uh, that as long as he could get on the agenda, that we will.
The application was February.
Okay, I, I saw that, and this is probably what I was telling, that's why it was puzzled.
Yeah, they were well within the timeframe.
I'll, I'll just be blunt, some of the local surveyors. Have a practice, it seems somewhat intentional, of submitting things. Like at the last minute, just expecting that the board will put them on an agenda like immediately. You know, and then we're sparing around setting a meeting date, all of that stuff. And I know from my standpoint, if we can start to have regular monthly meetings on dates that I can plan for. That is helpful to me. Yeah, because, I mean, particularly once we get into the summer months, I don't know. Until a couple of weeks in advance, not a lot will be in, in Timor too, or we have a hand up the bank, so that's where I need to be. Between renters. So, you know, I, I just, if there's a way we can set up just a, you know, regular schedule.
Um, can I just?
Yeah.
Comment, so, exactly where most of you are board members. The town had asked that the ZBA could accommodate applicants. Who wanted to move their projects forward with carrying on an additional Tuesday of the month. Not every month, but once in a while, if we could accommodate them. The board did agree back then, it was a different board, and the town was pleased with that. The planning board, however, stuck to their fourth Monday of the month, and that's what they'd like to meet, but they will do. Uh accommodate for important projects and whatnot. So with that said, other boards have scheduled their meeting dates the night they meet. So all board members are prepared, and I am, to say to the applicant, the zoning board will meet. On this day next month, and it's, it's written in stone at that point. You on the internet or the website. State that the zoning board meets second and fourth Thursdays, second and fourth Tuesdays if needed. You know, this, the additional meeting, but you're scheduled for the second Tuesdays of every month, that's how the zoning board works. If you don't want flexibility and you don't want to keep changing that to accommodate applicants, then you could probably state that. But the town does appreciate when the boards are flexible.
Doesn't think we need to change, I think, I think, I think the first Tuesday. And as needed, the, the third, third Thursday.
Fourth Tuesday.
The board ever meet if there's not an application?
Um, it's, it's up to the chairman, if, if, if the chairman feels. There's some important issues he'd like to address, he can hold what's called just a workshop discussion meeting. Which doesn't take publication timelines. And within forty-eight hours, I can post that and the board members can be notified, it doesn't happen often.
I wouldn't mind having a witness.
Not at all. No.
Some of this is pretty new to me.
Is there anything?
No, that's, that helps clarify, is like, for some reason I was like, all of a sudden, why aren't we meeting tonight? I don't understand what the time urgency on this was, but now you've explained it, so I understand. I just need to, the Tuesday as well.
Do you want me to bring it up in new business or after what we talked about?
I don't, we just close.
After, okay.
Well, shouldn't be discussing anything after we close.
No, this is just, this is just. New business, how about anything for old business? Nothing. Any, any mail?
Nothing came in for the zoning board's attention.
Perfect. So anyone on adjournments, make a motion?
So moved.
Second. All members say aye? Excellent. Are we done, Pam?